Oh, okay. I'm going to read the meeting statement.
This meeting is being recorded.
Let's do it.
This meeting is being recorded. Meeting statement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law in the June 16, 2021 Act, extending portions of this order, this meeting of the Douglas Sutton and Uxbridge Planning Boards is in a hybrid format with both in-person and Zoom components. To join the meeting, visit www.zoom.us/join and enter meeting ID 824-5527-1104 or by calling 1-646-876-9923. No passcode is required, but you must have an authentic Zoom account to join. The meeting will be broadcast and recorded on local public access station and live streamed on the town's YouTube channel when available. Pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20, no person shall address a meeting of the public body without permission of the chair. Individuals who would like to participate should state their name and address after being recognized by the chairperson. I'll now call, do a roll call of each of the boards. We'll start with Douglas. Tracy Sharkey?
Here.
Ernie Marks?
Here.
Michael Greco?
Here.
Aaron Socrates? Not here, right?
Not here.
He's always late.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Michael Zwicker?
Here.
And you're, uh, you're good.
Jake.
Jacob Schultzberg's not absent, right? Or he's absent, right? Got it. So we have a quorum of the Douglas Planning Board, the Sutton Planning Board. Wally Baker?
Here.
Michael Gagin?
Here.
Bob Largess?
Here.
Scott Paul?
Here.
Kyle Bergerson?
Not here.
Not here. Bill Calcott?
Here.
And you're supported by Town Planner Jen Hager.
Here.
Uxbridge Planning Board Barry Dessereaux?
Here.
James Smith?
Here.
Barry Hawk?
Here.
Eli Lavadere?
Here.
And Joe Leonardo is not here, is that correct?
Correct.
Great. So we have a quorum of both of the Douglas Planning Board, the Sutton Planning Board, and the Uxbridge Planning Board. Since the last joint meeting of the boards on April 29th, the applicant has met at least once in continuations of this hearing with each board individually. It is my understanding that we may be at the point where a few waiver requests may remain to be acted upon, and then the boards may be ready to take action on the applications. I will defer to Attorney Brodeur for a summary of the individual nights of the hearing, and then to each chair to indicate if they have any additional comments, need additional information, or are ready to take some or all requested action on the applications before them. Yes, ma'am?
Did any of the boards approve minutes of April 29th?
We have not, that I know of. So we should probably do that. Does that seem appropriate? All right. So we'll do that individually by boards. Let me bring back my list. So we'll start, let's go backwards. Let's start with Uxbridge Planning Board to approve the minutes of April 29th. Roll call vote. Actually, I need a motion to approve the minutes of April 29th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 29th.
That was Eli. And a second?
Second.
State your name.
Barry.
Barry!
That's the good Barry.
Barry Hawk is seconded.
Everybody knew.
We're going to call or do a roll call vote. Barry Dessereaux?
Aye.
James Smith?
Aye.
Barry Hawk?
Aye.
Eli Lavadere?
Aye.
Motion carries they've approved the minutes of April 29th. Of the Sutton Planning Board, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 29th?
Wally Baker, so move.
Is there a second?
Second, so move.
Thank you. And a roll call vote. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Michael Gagin?
Aye.
Robert Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Kyle Bergerson?
Not here.
Sorry, thanks. Okay. And Bill Calcott. I've got to figure this out eventually. Thank you. And the motion carries the Sutton Planning Board has approved the minutes of the April 29th. The Douglas Planning Board, Tracy, we need a motion from the...
I'll move.
Ernie Marks? Ernie Marks, so moved.
Mark Shorter, a second.
Thank you. And a roll call vote. Ernie Marks?
Aye.
Tracy Sharkey?
Aye.
Michael Greco?
Aye.
Aaron Socrates, still not here. Leslie Stevens?
Aye.
And Michael Zwicker?
Aye.
And the motion carries for Douglas, they've approved the minutes of the April 29th planning, three-town planning board meeting. Are we good, Jen?
I think we are.
Okay. Thank you. At that point. So Todd, are you with us?
I'm here. How are you, everybody?
Welcome, Todd. Todd, do you want to give us a summary of what's been going on since we last met all together?
Sure. And I had planned to be there in person with everybody tonight, but my nine-year-old daughter decided to give me an early Father's Day gift, which consists of a pretty bad cold. So I'm here with tissues and cough drops in hand. I saved you all the presents in person tonight, so. But here we are, back together, the bands back together here again for a joint hearing. Since the last time we've been together, as you all know, you've come and met with each of the boards individually, Douglas on two occasions, Uxbridge and Sutton on one occasion. We've handled the individual town waivers, all but for one in Sutton, which we need to take up tonight at some point. And we've gotten to various stages of talking about a decision with each of the planning boards. So, you know, in particular, Douglas has a, we discussed a draft decision at the last public hearing. And since then, you know, there have been minor revisions made to that. And I'm hopeful that Douglas has in front of them a form of a decision that they're happy with, but we can certainly discuss that at some point. We handled the one waiver in Douglas for parking, and that was already done at the last Douglas hearing. In Uxbridge, you know, we had similar discussion that we did in Douglas. We did take care of the one waiver in Uxbridge, but haven't gotten that far on discussing the decision or conditions of approval. So hopefully, we have some capacity to do that tonight. In Sutton, we went through a laundry list of waivers, handled all of those but one, which is the septic issue and the FAR issue, which we can touch upon. And, you know, we need to start to talk about any conditions of approval with Sutton as well. So that's a very, very brief summary of where we've been, but you've all been part of your individual meetings, so you know what's occurred there. So I'm happy to start with whomever wants to, whichever town is eager to start discussion here. I'm happy to jump in and go from there.
I think what we'll do is we'll give each town's chair an opportunity to kind of summarize their thoughts on the previous meetings with you. And it might make sense to take that in turn. Does that make sense? So that we'll, we'll start with Tracy here in Douglas. She can provide us some comments on the meeting, and then we can take up those individually. Does that make sense? And then we'll roll all the way through that way.
Yeah, I think we're farther along than anyone. So we've already voted on our waiver, and our town council has drafted our decision with the minor changes that we discussed at the last meeting. So I circulated the decision to the board when I, right when I got it. But I think it's exactly what we had, yeah, what we discussed. And I think we're ready to make a motion on this board.
Very good.
I mean, we've, yeah, we've got it a lot. So we're ready to close, and we're ready to vote.
Should we go ahead and just take that? Are you comfortable with that, Todd?
Yep, yep.
We have the last, last plan revision date.
It's in the, it's in the decision, but it is, um...
June 10th?
Okay, just looking for it.
That would be last Thursday.
June 10th.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So do I have a motion?
Get that in there?
Motion to close the public hearing on August 10th.
So what is, what's your preference? You would close the hearing and then make the motion?
Normally, close our hearings.
That's your preference? I will go with that.
We don't close our hearing before in case we want somebody's input, but you guys can do it whatever way you want.
Or at the decision.
So I'll make a motion and close the Douglas.
Motion made by Mike Z.
Well, second.
Second by Mike G. Roll call vote.
Tracy Sharkey?
Aye.
Ernie Marks?
Aye.
Michael G?
Aye.
Michael Z?
Throw me there.
And Leslie Stevens?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries to accept the...
Close.
The close, all right, thank you. To close the meeting, and that motion passes. Is there now a vote on the waiver? Does somebody want to read the waiver?
We've already approved the waiver.
You've already done that. Wow.
We took the waiver, so...
Yeah, it was, it was one waiver.
One waiver.
So we need a motion then to approve...
Grant the waiver. Well, we already did.
We did that, I think.
Grant the site plan review special permit. Yeah, they removed their earth removal. They withdrew it.
Yep.
So we'll make a motion on the table to approve the site plan, special permit, the site plan review for map 114, Puzzles 326, Douglas Maps.
And just site plan review permit, not special permit.
Site plan review?
Yes.
As red one.
And that motion is...
Mike Z.
Mike Z?
I'll second it.
Okay. Got that, Jen? Jen is still taking notes.
Ernie Marks.
Okay. And we'll do a roll call vote. Tracy Sharkey?
Aye.
Ernie Marks?
Aye.
Michael G?
Aye.
Michael Z?
Aye.
Leslie Stevens?
Aye.
And the motion carries.
And I just wanted to just clarify that you guys discussed all of your conditions in open meeting on camera at the last meeting.
During time.
That's why we didn't really need to say all those aloud.
Yep, no.
Right.
It's not about to torture you, so.
That's all right.
Do you have the table?
We need to stay?
No.
Is that it?
We don't.
We'll hold the journey and meeting until we're all done. How does that make sense? Unless you guys want to... Your host, you're here for the duration, guys. Sorry.
Yeah. You want us to relieve our spots? Take the table?
You're going to take your camera and leave?
No, I mean, let Sutton sit at the table. I could be here longer.
All right. Maybe at that point, it makes sense to, let's proceed to Sutton. Mike, you want to give us a summary of where Sutton stands?
Sure. My name is Mike Gagin. I am the newly elected chairman as of two days ago. Welcome to our first baptism.
Start easy.
It looks like from, one of the things we have left, we did have a motion to allow the withdrawal of the earth removal application. It's the first thing we need to do tonight. So we're going to have a motion.
Make a motion to, Wally Baker, make a motion to withdraw, allow the withdrawal of our earth removal application. It's a letter sent on June 8th from, uh, through a builder.
Is there a second for that motion?
There is a second.
And a roll call vote. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Mike Gagin?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Bill Calcott?
Aye.
Motion carries to accept the removal, the withdrawal of the earth removal petition. And?
Next thing we have, it looks like from our last meeting, we had with the group, we had one waiver request remaining, which is a waiver request from Sutton zoning bylaw, Route 146, Oval Lake District bylaws, section 5D4C9C, as follows. V point D, point 4, point C, point 9, point C. And I guess we're looking for a little bit of, for Todd possibly to jump in, in why they're looking for that waiver. If you can, I don't know if you can hear me properly.
Todd, did you get that?
I can hear you. This is Todd. So this is the waiver that we talked about with Sutton with regard to the septic system on-site and, you know, frankly, the system's in Uxbridge. But we requested, as you know, a laundry list from Sutton and provisions under the 146 Oval Lake District just for completeness here with everything. So this deals with the FAA, and the ratios that are set forth in the zoning bylaw. And I think, as you know, and we've talked about this in session before, but the system is set up for the size of the building. It's pretty, it's pretty well oversized, in Dan Feeney's words. And, you know, we don't expect this to be a very large producer of flow. So we felt like doing the on-site system was reasonable in this, in this case. And we discussed with Uxbridge, you know, why we didn't want to do the sewer connection. It's a pretty long distance away. And, you know, for this particular project, would be a pretty hefty price tag. So we asked for the waiver from Sutton under their 146 Oval Lake District provisions.
Okay. Thank you, Todd. I just want to check with the other board members if you have any comments or thoughts at this time that we want to add.
Would it, um, I mean, if it fails once, you can redo it. If it fails twice, do you tie into it? Or do we condition something like that?
Did you hear that, Todd?
Yeah. So, you know, when we described the system previously and the site conditions, I'm sure Dan could do a better job, but I'll give it my best. You know, it's pretty, pretty sandy soils out there, and the ability to, you know, perk out there. It's a great site for a septic system. That's really how we've been describing it. So we're not overly concerned about a failure in any sense over there.
Okay. Does that address your concern, Bill?
Yes. I mean, if it does fail, obviously, it's got to get fixed one way or another, whether we condition it or not.
Yeah.
People to help.
Correct. Okay. Are there further comments?
Anybody else? Could we just check if there's anybody online, maybe from Sutton or elsewhere that has any comments on this waiver? I'm not sure if we have any Sutton.
Not quite sure how the Zoom works on that.
I don't see any hands raised.
Do we have any hands raised on the Zoom call that we can see? Anybody else would like to comment on that, on our Zoom gallery here?
I don't see any hands raised.
No.
Thank you for checking, Mike.
Okay. I'll sit down.
Bob?
Through the chairperson, I, I, I'm not an expert on septic systems, so I believe everything that I'm hearing, but it's our responsibility to be here if this thing does fail. I believe it is not going to, but I'm still comfortable having a backup plan in case something happens. That would not be used, but I want to have that tool, toolbox. If it's, I don't want the whole project to be stopped or whatever, but it is due diligence.
You should do a...
Because there's three towns involved there. That's a big, bigger one than the usual.
Is there a video being shown?
I want to do that, too, so.
Not available, Mr. Green. Take a door to help.
Don't set the scope.
Not planning, what they talk about, like, if you can't.
If it's in the street.
Those systems that come from Uxbridge, does anyone have any comments on that?
Well, what we're looking for right now is to see if they're designed a reserve area for the septic. So if they're a reserve area, then we feel confident. Plus, that site was actually a place used to haul sewer gravel out of. So like, the perk right there is less than two minutes an inch, so.
That's great.
Was there?
Excellent.
Yeah. That used to be a sewer gravel, that used to be a gravel pit. And it used to, most of the gravel they hauled out of there was from sewer gravel.
Perfect timing.
And they use it, so.
How can you see it?
I don't see any reserve.
We know, we're pretty comfortable with that.
Did you find a reserve area? Does it look like it's there?
No.
It shows one, two, three, four, five.
Yeah, it wasn't any, well, it's just chain 4500.
Yeah.
So it's almost got to be.
Does that address your concern, Bob?
Conceptual soil absorption system.
Right. Looks like they want like five connected.
Yeah.
They want to move forward.
I can't read it, see the calculation, remain where.
It just says soil absorption system.
Is it actually a reserve area? Is it just the existing capacity?
Doesn't really matter.
It's overdesigned.
Is it?
Is that it?
Yep.
So for those on the Zoom call, it's, there's a sense that it might be added as a condition, but somewhat moot because the system is, is overdesigned? Is that, but they feel comfortable and, and there's still some concern and thought that they would like it to add it as a condition? Is that correct?
It's not, yeah, it's not actually designed yet. It's a conceptual. So it just needs to be approved through the board of health. I don't, I don't know.
Ultimately, the board of health.
Yeah, it's not planning board.
I mean, I know it's in the bylaw, but really, it's going to end up being a board of health issue ultimately.
It's not designed. Yeah. Just has some conceptual soil.
Chairman Gager, planning, Town Planner Jen Hager, how would you like to proceed with that?
Again, if we're not worried about it, I don't think that any kind of condition is a big deal anyways. As, as was noted, if you have a Title V septic system and it fails, Uxbridge Board of Health is going to be on it immediately, and there's going to have to be a repair. And if the repair can't be made, they're going to kind of be forced to tie it to something anyways, or, or do a whole intake till it ties in to something. So I'm not overly worried about it, but I'm also, I don't even, I wouldn't even blanket a condition that says, hey, if your septic system fails twice, you got to look at, you got to move to tie it to something. Because the law commentary, nothing's going to fail. It's just, so, um, so, you know, my, you know, my, you know, I'm comfortable with whichever direction the board wants to go on that motion. So.
Okay.
You had a motion out there somewhere?
I'll make a motion for, well, to make a 37.
To grant the waiver.
Yeah. Oh, this is the waiver.
I was going to say, we have a draft of a motion to grant the waiver from the Sutton zoning bylaw, section VD4C9C.
Write it up, and then you can add in whatever condition you want.
Right.
Okay, so you've got a draft motion there, I think.
We don't have any conditions.
Nope.
Will somebody make that motion?
I make a motion to grant the waiver from Sutton zoning bylaw, section 5D4C9C, having found that although the original building exceeds the allowable FAR that the anticipated use and occupancy of the building will produce fireless wastewater and anticipated FAR regulations, therefore, a properly permitted Title V septic system can be utilized.
Is there, that was Bill Calcott, and is there a second?
Bob Largess, a second.
Thank you.
So.
Was there a question from the Zoom gallery?
Telephone.
On the back.
I think it's a telephone.
Yeah.
All right. We'll do a quick roll call vote of the Sutton Planning Board. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Bob, Mike, Michael Gagin?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Bill Calcott?
Aye.
The motion carries to grant the waiver. Is there a way to moot the...
Yeah.
Oh, look at that. There's all powerful things.
Yep.
Thank you.
There we go.
Yep.
Hear that?
So Sutton does not typically close the public hearing before they deliberate on the project or take action on the, as the board likes to be able to speak freely with the public or applicant about the potential conditions. This may not be the case. Obviously, it was not with Douglas or Uxbridge. So there may be an interjection. Is there further, further motions or considerations from the town of Sutton at this time?
Not at the moment, no. Just some accent items, but are we going to go through them right now, Jen?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the first one is a special permit for the trucking services and warehousing use. The board first needs to make the required findings, and then make the motion for approval of that special permit. So if the members can run through the five findings required by law, that would be the first step.
Is this all as one motion or separately?
So they're going to make their findings.
Okay.
There's five of them. And then they'll make the motion to grant the special permit for the use with any conditions.
Thank you.
So I'll make the following findings for this project. Number one, specific site is appropriate location for the proposed use because of the location to the major highway system. It's appropriately zoned. Number two, the provisions for private sewers and public water systems are adequate per the documents submitted. Number three, the effect of the developed use upon the neighborhood is minimized as the majority of the homes are substantially removed and remote from this location, and mostly are higher in elevation than the site. There will not be, there will not be undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians because of the proximity to Route 146, the on and off ramp for that, and the lanes in and out that are being designed for this program or for this project. And number five, for the plans and documents submitted and testimony provided during the hearing, adequate and appropriate facilities have been provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use, structure, and site. In view of these considerations and the following conditions, such special permit is consistent with the spirit of this bylaw and generally in conformance with the master plan for the town.
Findings completed.
Okay.
All right, now we can do the motion for the use special permit. And if nobody minds, I'm going to share our minimum conditions to the screen, so the board doesn't necessarily have to read them all verbatim, because that would be absolutely torture. So, so the board can decide, maybe. All right, I just got to figure out how to do that. So if you want to start the...
It's the green on the bottom, right?
Yeah.
I'm asking it to connect to my drive.
We have 36 conditions.
So.
You're going to have to read it!
We have to read them?
Yeah, you do have to read them, because unlike Douglas, you didn't already kind of read them and go through them in your past meeting.
Yep. So we first need somebody to make the motion, and then we'll begin with the special, the conditions. Then we can, you can split it up if you want.
10, 10, 10, 9, right. Yeah.
It's broadcast on my screen, but it's not.
All right.
We probably have, I mean, we should probably just read them once and get it done.
We're going to make the motion.
They're showing on my screen that they're...
There you go.
Yay! I'm excited.
So I make a motion to grant the special permit for the use of this site for trucking services and warehousing, as detailed in the application document. As a meeting testimony, having made the above findings, first thought, and subject to the following conditions. Condition number one, the current applicant, the term applicant, please stop, shall refer to the current applicant and its insidies, successors, affiliates, subsidiaries, or other entity related thereto. The applicant shall provide notice to the board upon any sale, transfer, assignment of project other than an assignment of the project for a mortgage pursuant to financing. And for in any sale of more than 50% of the assets or interest in the project, each tenant shall provide the contact information to board and the chief police for the persons who are relatively responsible for the operating of the tenant's equipment. Two, the site plan approval authorizes only the project as described in the review. All the plans and documents and hearing testimony. Any proposed material change to the use, intensity, size, configuration, or footprint of the project and/or site improvement serving the project shall require an amendment of this decision. This approval having been based, reviewed, proposed by the site design as presented to the board for the record, document, plans, and testimony, any modifications not identified and described in this decision shall be subject to the same submittal review and review procedures as with the original files. Three, within any month of the appeal hearing concluding, the applicant shall provide a final set of plans, waivers, granting, and condition of renewal on the planned, planned set for board's endorsement as the record set of plans upon which construction shall be based. Four, construction on the site shall be limited to Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturdays, 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and shall exclude Sundays in all local, state, and federal reserve holidays. Five, during any construction, the applicant shall maintain all feasible regula means of dust control and shall collect all agreed daily. Six, the applicant shall implement measures to ensure that noise-related construction activity does not exceed acceptable levels as set forth by federal and state regulatory agencies. The applicant shall cease any excessive loud noise during construction activities or directed by a newly appointed agent of course. No excessive loud activities are permitted prior to 7:00. No excessive loud activities are permitted prior to 7:00 a.m. or after 7:00 p.m. Seven, the board reserves the right to review Sutton landscaping within a year installation for the purpose of adding plans or screen repairs which may usually be necessary to complete the intended aesthetics and screen. Eight, the board reserves the right to review lighting located within Sutton or affecting Sutton and require adjustments if they find it to be in danger or nuisance. Nine, there will be no outdoor storage of any kind except within trailer backs. Ten, the applicant shall include the plan of the open space on Route 146 special permit with the intent of ensuring that the open space shown on the site plan shall remain undeveloped open space in accordance with the Sutton zoning by law. Number one. Number eleven, all construction equipment utilized to construct the project shall be outfitted with manufacturer-approved silencing equipment, including mufflers and skirts. Number twelve, the applicant shall employ quiet building equipment and erection systems to minimize sound transmitted to nearby residents. Number thirteen, the building occupant shall ensure compliance with nighttime, 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. restrictions against trailer disconnects and connects along the east side of the building. If issues arise with sound between these hours, the board reserves the right to require additional mitigation. Number fourteen, the applicant shall provide the Sutton Planning Board and Chief of Police with appropriate contact information for local and regional operation, staff of any tenant, and shall update the information as necessary. Number fifteen, should earth need to be removed from this site in excess of the minimum allowed, the applicant shall apply for and receive the appropriate waiver and/or permit.
I'm just going to read the first sentence, and then say, as per the screen, and that was courtesy of Douglas's town council.
Sixteen, the applicant shall provide host occupancy traffic monitoring studies for the project, with the remaining condition as noted and written on the screen. Now we do right over at that. Number seventeen, once a building occupant and/or subsequent tenants are known, a written statement of a proposed user and their operational characteristics shall be submitted to the planning board. In the event that the characteristics demonstrates additional truck or employee parking is necessary, an amended site plan shall be submitted and approved, and this parking and any related landscaping shall be constructed prior to this tenant's occupancy. Prior to commencement of construction, number eighteen, the applicant shall apply for and be granted a special permit to exceed the allowed 45-foot height. Number nineteen, the applicant shall prepare and submit for the board's approval on the construction traffic management plan, which at a minimum shall address construction, truck routes, contractor parking, staging areas, hours of operation, determination of need for police details during each identified construction phase. Number twenty, all required approvals and/or permits shall be received from applicable permitting authorities.
Number twenty-one, a pre-construction meeting shall be held in the planning, with the planning director and other town staff as appropriate. The town's consulting engineer, the applicant, and/or his representative, the applicant's engineer, and the applicant's construction supervisor for this site. The minutes shall be drafted by the town's counseling engineer and provided that all parties in attendance within 48 hours of approval prior to construction start to ensure that all parties are in agreement. Number two twenty-two, the applicant shall provide a minimum of one week's notice and review the state limits of clearing with the planning board representative. Prior to issuance of building or sign permits. Number twenty-three, prior to issuance of permits for signage within the town of Sutton, the applicant shall submit any signage not shown on the plan to the planning board. The board shall review and act on the signage, including for compliance with the signed bylaw and the Route 146 overlay district bylaw criteria. Prior to issuance of occupancy permits. Number twenty-four, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, security systems and all necessary amplifiers shall be installed as required by the police and fire chiefs. Number twenty-five, residents across from the main driveway on Lackey Dam Road shall be provided with a reasonable means to limit headlight trespass. Number twenty-six.
Let's summarize this. So again, this is Douglas Town Council, thanks. This is a condition which is kind of the trigger for, if the traffic of a tenant is anticipated to be more than was in the original proposal, these are the triggers for revisiting the traffic. So this condition is strictly about triggers for reviewing the traffic. So that's all this condition is. As printed on the screen and in Douglas's draft can.
Post-tenant. That throws four. Revisiting when there's a tenant.
When there's a tenant, yes, exactly.
Just so your board knows.
Thank you. So number twenty-seven.
Number twenty-seven, the applicant shall construct a northbound left turn lane on Lackey Dam Road at the site, driveway at the expense of the applicant and subject to the requirements of the town of Uxbridge in the access permit that will be issued by the Mass DOT. Number twenty-eight, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy on any building, the applicant shall submit to the planning board and receive approval for an as-built plan and written certification from the project's engineer, and that site and all infrastructure to serve this area on the site has been constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan. Number twenty-nine, prior to issuance of occupancy of any structure in Knox Box with building access keys and/or codes, a building layout plan and emergency contract shall be installed to the certification of the fire department. And number thirty, the hall exterior doors and route access shall be marked on the interior and exterior with reflective sequential numbering that is reflected on the building layout plan in the Knox Box. Article thirty-one, the fire department shall be given the opportunity to tour the building to orient themselves with the new structure. Thirty-two, the building occupant shall detail the method of location of snow removal from trucks. Thirty-three, the applicant shall implement certain improvement measures to the intersection of Hill Bow and North Streets in Douglas, if identified by the town traffic insult. G P I, in its report to the planning boards dated April 13, 2021, and PHB's April 28, 2021 response, both attached hereto and incorporated herein, which includes adding signage as approved by the safety committee to clarify the three-way stop condition, arrows indicating the direction of Route 16, and an intersection, a warning sign on the approach of the intersection of Hill Bow Street, adding pedestrian crossing warning signs, and installing the reflective silver traffic light. On the northern side of Hill Bow Street, westbound approach of the intersection, like Vegas. Thirty-four, the applicant shall ensure proper maintenance of plantings on the site, including immediate replacement of dead or diseased plantings unless it is winter or summer, in which case the following planting season. Thirty-five, no sodium-based deicing agent shall be utilized on the site. Potassium chloride or calcium fluoride are deemed acceptable to use on the site. Thirty-six, the applicant shall submit to O M Plan to the site frame your systems. Inspection duties shall be performed in accordance with recommended schedule, and a written report shall be prepared by the inspection, including any required corrective actions to be taken or to conduct reports to be submitted to the planning board. Fourteen, business days and orders received and reported. Required corrective action shall be promptly implemented by order and in accordance.
It's supposed to be thirty-six.
Is that a decision or a motion?
That was a motion.
Thirty-seven.
That wasn't a decision?
Thirty-seven?
No.
Upon failure of the septic system, the applicant must comply with the appropriate Board of Health for remediation, which may include tying into any existing senior suit.
Okay, that's it.
That's the motion, is there a second?
Second. Okay, oh, wait a minute, hold on. So those were the conditions, you were the second, Wally?
Yep.
I'm stopping here.
Leave, ER, disrupt, quarrel, everything. Be mindful.
All right, so, that, sorry, motion, you were the second.
And now we can take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Michael Gagan?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Bill Talcott?
Aye.
Motion carries for the special, for the special permit for trucking services, is that correct?
Yes.
Great. And now, is there a motion for the special permit for Route 146 overlay special permit?
I make a motion to grant the Route 146 overlay district special permit, having found during the hearing process that the project as presented through record plans, documents, and hearing testimony, subject to waivers previously granted, and also subject to the following conditions, as complying with the specific criteria of the Route 146 overlay district bylaw, conditions one to thirty-seven have already been read.
Thank you.
Don't read them again.
Who is the second? Bob, thank you. And now a roll call vote. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Michael Gagan?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Bill Talcott?
Aye.
The motion carries for the special permit, Route 146 overlay district special permit. Do we have a motion for the site plan approval?
I'll make that motion. To grant, I make a motion to grant site plan approval for the use of 20R and 30R Oakhurst Road and 1 and 3 Lackey Dam Road as a facility for trucking services and warehousing based on the most recent set of record plans and documents with waivers previously granted and subject to the following. Eight previously granted to the.
Is there a second for that motion? Bob Largess, second. And now a roll call vote. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Michael Gagan?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul? Yeah, Scott Paul. Bill Talcott?
Aye.
The motion carries for site plan approval. Are there further conditions or waivers from the town of Sutton?
Nope. Nope.
Just checking.
Sorry.
Don't want to, don't want to miss anything.
Do you want us to do our motion to close our hearing?
Yeah, I'm going to say.
Yes, I was going to, that.
Close the public hearing.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing from Sutton?
I just have one question, just to make sure. So where are we saying, in the, whether the use is different than what was provided by the app?
There's two of those.
Which one specifically?
Number two does, takes care of that. Number two takes care of that.
Okay.
Okay.
Sixteen is the traffic?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question before?
To close your hearing?
You guys to close the public hearing. On your conditions, and I don't know what Douglas had, just thinking of it, is your hours of operation for construction? I know when we've done Medline, the big ones, they work sometimes straight through the night when they're doing some of the concrete pours. So I don't know if, if we all have different aspects of timeframes. I think that could turn into a problem, because we have it as, these are the construction hours, but if you're going to be outside of these hours for a concrete pour or something of that nature, then you have to contact the police department and let them know that you're going to be working past that timeframe, so.
Do you want to just do an blanket amendment to that? Because we're okay with that as well.
Yeah, I just think that if we all have that same, same kind of plan, it just makes it easier on them.
I mean, ours is on line item four, and ours is different than Sutton's, too. A little bit.
I think we had an hour difference.
Douglas allows construction on Saturdays all day, it looks like.
And we allow starting of equipment before seven o'clock and during the winter months and stuff like that.
So should we each kind of state what our hours are and try to just.
Well, we should have one agreement, I would think, between the tri-town for the applicant.
Yeah.
Especially if they're doing a floor pour, once they start, they won't stop.
Right.
I mean, that's rolling. The plant's going 24/7.
So what's your condition?
And I don't think.
What's Uxbridge's condition? How does it read?
Well, typically, so typically, we're, you know, seven to seven, and then eight to.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah, and then, was it eight to four, something like that. No work on, on Saturdays, no work on Sundays, but in the event that you need to extend those hours, then you just notify the local police department to make them aware that you're doing a, you know, pour, something that's being extended out.
What do you think about Saturdays?
We allow Saturdays.
They didn't have Saturday, we allow Saturdays.
No, we do eight to four, I think. I think typically, eight to four, yeah.
We have.
Seven to seven.
And holidays?
Seven to seven on Saturdays.
No holidays.
No holidays, yeah.
Well, we only have a couple of holidays.
Unless they notify the LP, local planning department.
Yeah.
How about we do seven to seven, Monday through Friday, eight to four Saturday?
We allow seven to seven.
That's, that's.
Because, if you ask me, seven, because some people, I mean, people and neighbors, your neighbors over there.
You're right.
Having a cookout and you got construction going on.
What about, what about seven to four? It's consistent in the morning.
Yeah.
Guys can get started.
Yeah.
And then get out, they want to go home.
Yeah, plus those guys want to go home, too, anyways, but be on four o'clock at ten.
Yeah, get that on a Saturday, there's concerts and people have parties in the backyard, whatever, you know.
And we allow between November 15th and April 1st, starting of equipment at 6:30 a.m. So they can preheat it. They can't start construction until seven.
What's the date, November 15th to when?
April 1st.
April 1st.
You're winter season.
Yeah.
So the guys go in and they start up their equipment and let it warm up before they start?
6:30 to warm up.
At what time, 6:30?
6:30.
6:30, we'd let them start.
Yeah, and your windows are generally closed, at least.
Right. I would say, yeah.
And then we do, we exclude Sundays in all local, state, and federal.
I think we all agree with that.
No, we don't do all that. Yeah, I'll give it to you.
I think we all agree with Sunday.
How do you address concrete pours?
So you do, they do New Years?
Doable, they just have to notice.
There's a lot of your pickle holidays.
Right.
Every holiday off like tomorrow's holiday.
Yeah. That was kind of my whole thing, it's just, you know, we let them go.
So let's, let's have one, one reading of where we think we're at, and then if we need to amend this, we can, or discuss.
So, right now, we're at 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Saturday, no Sundays, and the holidays in this list are New Year's, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, Christmas Eve, and Christmas. And your reasoning was, those are holidays where a lot of, most people are off the other holidays, not so much.
Correct.
And these are more when people are likely to get, kind of gatherings.
Correct.
Gathering, right.
How does the planning board feel about that?
And the early start, you know, list.
Oh, and the early start is.
The list.
Before 7:00 a.m. by.
6:30 is start time.
6:30, April, November 15th to April 1st.
That's not construction, that's just warm up.
Just vehicle warm up.
Do you have a question, Mayanna?
Bob, you have a question?
Well, I just, I think that Sutton Planning Board should support the three-town effort to cooperate with each other. I recognize it's not how we've done it in Sutton in the past, but the tribe doesn't see if it works.
And this is strictly on construction?
I want to be on the, I want to be on a three-town effort. We want to be part of the solution, not the problem, but other projects like this.
So we can substitute that into acquisition of.
So we'll just do a motion to amend condition four according to what we just.
So should we do, take a motion separately for each board to adopt what Jen just read?
Yeah.
Well, we've already closed.
We're the only ones that have.
Okay.
And then Uxbridge will go next.
Ours are good.
All right, yours are good.
Till the four, four o'clock.
Twenty-four hour.
And four o'clock on Saturdays is our little give back to the. And four o'clock on Saturdays is our little give back to the.
Yeah.
The only thing we don't have is a provision for the 24-hour, so that's something that, whether we do a friendly amendment or whatever, I know we closed the public hearing, but a friendly amendment to allow that to be compatible with the tri-town.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
Whereas the rest of our hours in operation is fine, except for the once in a while on the long day pours, which is going to happen.
Yeah, and actually, we didn't put that language in ours, so it would include, and if there's an unusual circumstance, we usually, when we write that in, we do, they try to reach out to the planning office, and they definitely reach out to the police.
Would you like to handle that with Sutton at this point, at this time?
We have a motion on the floor by Bob to amend condition four.
Is there a second?
Wally Baker seconded.
And a roll call vote for that motion. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Michael Gagin?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Bill Talcott?
Aye.
The motion carries to amend the construction hour.
Our hearing, guys, thanks, or should we?
Yep.
There was a second?
Second.
And a roll call to close the public hearing for Sutton. Wally Baker?
Aye.
Michael Gagin?
Aye.
Bob Largess?
Aye.
Scott Paul?
Aye.
Bill Talcott?
Aye.
The Sutton hearing has been closed.
Douglas make a friendly amendment?
Sure. Can we take that now so that we can then let?
Where the friendly amendment would be to be the same for the tri-town and notification of the police department that there's going to be a 24-hour pour beyond the hours of normal construction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And a roll call vote to the Douglas Planning Board. Tracy Sharkey?
Aye.
Ernie Marks?
Aye.
Michael Greco?
Aye.
Aaron Socrat?
Aye.
Leslie Stevens?
Aye.
Michael Zwicker?
Aye.
Thank you. A friendly amendment?
I don't know everybody's voices. Who is the motion, who is the second?
I make the motion, Mike Z.
I'm Z.
And I seconded.
All right, I know.
All right. At this time, we'll turn it over to Barry to provide us with an update and discussion of the motions.
Yeah, so at our last meeting that we had with Todd, we issued the waiver that was required along the 146 side for that parcel. I haven't, Todd, I don't know if you've sent anything over, I haven't received anything as to decision conditions. I know you're supposed to reach out to Talerman, and I haven't seen anything, and I know Amy, I don't think Amy has said anything. Have you heard anything on your end?
I've talked to Brian, but he was waiting to be engaged by you folks is what I was, where I was, like, believing. So he's aware and he's familiar, and obviously he did the Douglas decision. And I don't know if Brian's in the audience, but that was where we left off with that.
Okay, because I'd like to just have something kicked over by you guys to, you know, review, and I want to try to keep, you know, kind of like what you guys had for Sutton on the decision and what Douglas has, I want to keep our stuff kind of in that same consistency as everybody else, so it's not everybody, you're working by a different set of rules on everybody.
Yeah.
You know, so that's kind of what we're looking for is on our end.
So why don't I then, because we didn't have that communication with your council at all, so why don't I draft the decision, send it over to you guys? And we can, you know, it'll be similar to what Douglas and Sutton have done, but since we don't have that in front of us, it probably makes sense to continue your particular hearing and come in individual session to you.
Yep.
Okay. Make sure he puts in there both the water line running through the streets.
Oh, that's the one we forgot.
Yeah, yeah, that was the one thing I know we've talked about a bunch of times was the redoing the roadway, the entire width of the roadway, whatever is, you know, whatever you dig up for the water line and any underground utilities, that the entire roadway is repaired, not just the section that was dug out. That's under thrown, you know, further condition, I don't know if anybody else said, but it's actually Oxbridge, so it doesn't.
It's Oxbridge.
It's Oxbridge anyway, so we'll take care of that one.
You're welcome.
You're doing cleanup work right now.
Right.
Picking up scraps.
Did you talk to your DPW supervisor, Mr. Green, is it?
No, Sherman.
Sherman, and he relayed that information to us, and we did our Mass Works grant. We applied for full building and paving.
Okay. Perfect. Yeah, then it's probably best we just continue this to our regular meeting, and then we can knock this out and get it over with. But if you can get me a draft of something.
It's next Wednesday?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to be able to. Yeah, we have a, yeah, we have a meeting next Wednesday.
I would say, what's your next meeting after that?
July 14th.
Okay.
I mean, if we got a.
Do you have a meeting on the 24th?
23rd.
Twenty, yeah, 23rd.
14th.
That would be in for July, because we don't have one.
Yeah.
It's up to you, I mean, I can send something over tomorrow, but I don't want to unnecessarily rush your review of it, so.
Yeah, it gives us, you know, something, why don't you kick it over and let's just, we'll try to get you on.
Send it on Monday, I guess, get to us on Monday.
For the 23rd?
Yeah, we'll try to get, yeah, we'll get you on the 23rd, we don't have a lot on our agenda, I don't believe.
So six, twenty-three?
Just make sure it comes through and edit.
Seven twenty-three.
Yeah.
It'll be a word document.
Okay.
Six twenty-three? Seven twenty-three.
I just have to make a date and time specific to continue the public hearing.
Date, time, and place now.
That way you're covered.
Yeah, so it'll be June, it'll be, hold on, where am I at, yeah? It'll be June 23rd.
Next Thursday.
Wednesday. Next Wednesday, June 23rd.
At the?
At the Oxbridge Town Hall.
What town, what time?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And it's in person?
In person, so they tell us.
And no Zoom component, just in person?
Just in person.
Okay.
Thanks.
Awesome. Who is the motion on that?
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing to June 23rd at 7:00 at Oxbridge Town Hall.
Second. Eli and Barry Hawk.
Eli and a BH. Got you.
And a roll call vote for that. Barry Desresoue?
Aye.
James Smith?
Aye.
Barry Hawk?
Aye.
Eli Levadear?
Aye.
Motion carries to continue the hearing to June 23rd at Oxbridge Town Hall at 7:00 p.m. Is that right?
Yes.
Take it there?
Yep.
Are we on adjourn?
We're really close to that. I don't know if you guys want to offer any kind of further comments from Todd or anybody on the Zoom gallery?
Good luck. Hopefully moving forward here.
I would encourage the three towns to continue working together, as this planning board has been very exciting, working with the three of you. Thank you for inviting us to participate. It's been eye-opening. Actually, just as a point from CMR PCU, because this has been so enlightening for us, and we're, these types of facilities are coming to our region fast and furious, we're going to host a regional dialogue to discuss more about these in July, so hopefully we'll have participation from Charlton and Northborough and you guys as well, so to discuss kind of best practices moving forward, hopefully a lot of what we've learned here. So, thank you all. Is there a motion? We'll have to go through each town to adjourn this.
Did Bob have something?
Motion to adjourn.
Sutton's all over that. Motion from Bob Largess in Sutton, is there a second from Sutton?[1743.23]